I take it that was a yes?
All right, I'm.
That wasn't yes.
Okay, so having established that we are back, first have come out of the closed session, that's right. I'm sorry.
I move that the city council member certify by a recorded vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in that closed meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote for us, please?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
So that motion passes. And now that we've established that we have a quorum, we will begin the business meeting. Let's start with a moment of silence. Thank you. Counselors, any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few. And actually, I was just trying to find one of them. So this one came in via email from Alex Zan
Right.
letting us know about the eighth area student contest focused on helping others that Charlottesville, Virginia, Central Virginia students in grades K through 12 are encouraged to participate in the upcoming My Help List Contest starting on Monday, March 14th, but through Friday, April 22nd. This contest is created by Charlottesville Author Award winner and trailblazer Mr. Alex Zan. To enter the contest, students from a school, including homeschool in the Charlottesville, Albemarle, and surrounding counties are all eligible. They must, one, in 50 words or less, share in writing why it's important to help others. And two, list five things they have done to help someone or can do to help someone. There will be four winners chosen by selected judges from grades K through second, three through fifth, six through eighth, and ninth through 12. And the winners will receive a cash prize of $100. Winners will be announced on NBC 29 and also at alex.zan.com. All letters and responses can be mailed or dropped off at Jones Heating and Air at 633 Rose Hill Drive, Charlottesville, Virginia 22903, and please include a name, address, and phone number. The contest is centered around character, personal responsibility, respecting and valuing others. Additionally, I did also want to bring awareness that upcoming, we have the Take Back the Night. Um. March will be, um, Take Back the Night vigil will be on April 8th at the UVA Amphitheater from 6:00 to 8:00. There are also, um, throughout the month of April, there are a number of events happening in regard to Take Back the Night. One being communities of color celebrating wellness and self-care on April 14th, a Pride Festival and Picnic on April 16th. More information can be found on the UVA Take Back the Night Facebook page. And my last announcement is I would like to congratulate our Clerk of Council, Ms. Kena Thomas, for being recognized by the Chamber of Commerce as a woman leader in our community for Women's History Month.
Yeah, Kena.
Here, here, yay.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other announcements? So we will now hear an update from Dr. Denise Bonds, Blue Ridge Health District Director. Dr. Bonds?
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
See you all. Let me share my screen here. Someone will have to give me permission to share. There we go, okay. All right, so good evening. Let's talk about COVID. Fortunately, there is less to say about COVID, although we do have at least one new announcement for individuals. So here we are today, the district as a whole has had 48 new cases, which is actually a little higher than we've been seeing on a daily basis last week. You'll notice a slightly new format. There have been some changes at the state level with regard to databases. So I'm showing you from our health district point of view, the total numbers that we've had so far in Charlottesville, and you can see there's been just under 10,000 individuals that have had COVID since the beginning, 194 individuals who are hospitalized, and 75 unfortunate deaths. The curve that you see below the Instagram with the seven-day moving average actually gives you the most recent six months. And you can see that generally, here out at this tail end, we have very few cases that we're seeing in the city of Charlotte, really single digits. So that's good news for Charlottesville. We do have a new community level that we're using in many businesses, and I know the schools are using this as well, to look at, to provide you with some guidance about what you should do. So as a reminder, there's three levels. There's the green, yellow, and red level. And you can see that for the entire state, pretty much everyone is in the green. There's a few scattered places in the yellow. And I know that at least for Albemarle, it's a little bit of an artifact that we're trying to get some clarification on. We believe that for Albemarle, that yellow warning, that increased warning, is due not to new cases that are happening this week, but to some data cleanup that we have been doing from previous surges of the Omicron variant that are somehow getting counted as new cases at the CBT level. So for the city of Charlottesville, though, you are on the green level. It doesn't show the map, doesn't show Charlottesville on there, but you can pull it up, and I've done that here. It is the green level, so it's very low. You can see that the case rate per 100,000 population, in fact, it's not even registering. And this was the case rate as of last Thursday. That is when the CBC looks at these levels. The hospital admission rate, there's eight hospital admissions, COVID admissions per 100,000 population, and two and a half roughly percent of the staff inpatient beds are being used by individuals who contract COVID-19. Just a reminder, those hospital data points are active for the region, and our region includes more than the Blue Ridge Health District. So remember, this is a pretty large area of the Northwest region, including places like Orange and Bass and then Culpeper. So overall, Charlottesville's doing well, and we really do the Albemarle increases of data artifacts that we're trying to get further participation. So less COVID numbers, and as you saw in the CDC numbers, means less both hospitals. So these are the COVID inpatient statistics that I pulled up just this afternoon from both our hospitals. The orange lines show what's happening at UVA. So yesterday, they just admitted three new individuals with COVID-19 and have 26 patients in-house as of yesterday. So really, you can see the trend has really been gradual decrease, although not zero. We still are seeing cases out there, and people who are at higher risk, you need to be aware that there is still disease in our community. But it's the same over at Centennial Jefferson, again, as of this morning, I have four confirmed cases representing 3% of their total hospital inpatient. So decreasing numbers, but still not zero. So if you are immunocompromised, please be cautious. Orange is still primarily Omicron, although it's hard to see, but if you look on the weather, you can see there's a little bit of a change with more of a salmon color as opposed to the bottom, which is more of a purpley color. And the variant that 13 hours outbreaks out in Europe, for example. So it is becoming more of an issue in the state of Virginia, although at least in the Northwest, still, when these were tested, still primarily seems to be the original Omicron strain. So new information, the CDC has now come out with an additional recommendation with regard to boosters. So they have said that some individuals can get an additional booster using an mRNA vaccine, because I thought there's a Pfizer and a vaccine, four months after their first booster. So essentially, this represents a second booster. So here are the groups that the CDC recommends, and you really have to do your own nursing professional. And using your healthcare provider is probably the best individual to contact, to think of and help that. But it's anybody ages 12 and older who are either moderately or severely immunocompromised, any adult ages 15 and older, regardless of your age status, because really it's based on being older than 50. And then individuals or adults between 18 and 49, if they got G and J as their first shot and as their booster. So if they got G and J as their first shot, but then got a subsequent mRNA booster, no second boosters are recommended for that age group. However, if they're over the age of 50 and received G and J as their first dose, and then got an mRNA booster, then they can receive a second mRNA booster four months after the previous booster. So you can see, depending on which category you fit into, you may be eligible, or you may ultimately receive three vaccines, four vaccines, or five vaccines, if you got that third primary dose, which you are severely immunocompromised. So boosters are available. We are able to provide them. You can now go into base and actually register. There's a little bit of lag at the state offices last week, and we're certainly sorry for any individuals that got caught up in that, but it's all been worked out now, so you can make appointments. We are at every health department every week. And here in the Charlottesville area, we're here at Rose Hill Drive on Friday afternoon. And you can either make your appointment, or you can walk in. So just a reminder, even though you're in the green zone, there are things to think about. Remember, getting vaccinated, that's the primary way to keep yourself safe. And now, if you fall into one of those categories, getting that additional booster shot. If you are in the high-risk group, that is, you have moderate to severe immunocompromised, or you're older, or you have underlying health conditions that might put you at greater risk from adverse effects of COVID, we're recommending that you upgrade your mask, either a surgical or a KN95, sorry, KN95 or KN95, or something similar to that. Distance is your friend. We really continue to recommend people keeping that 16 apart. Whereas it's always better to socialize, and then you're going to see very few outbreaks associated with outdoors gatherings. And if you are going to be in a crowded environment, wear that mask, and of course, wash your hands, it's going to keep you safe from lots of things. Just a brief reminder, we are not doing case investigations or contact tracing now, except in very special circumstances. So if you know that you were infected with COVID-19, you have done that home test, and it's come back positive, you need to isolate for at least five days, longer if your symptoms aren't better, and wear a mask on day 6 through 10. You may want to think about getting another home test after day five, see if you're infectious, if it's positive, stay in isolation. But it's, that's a recommendation. If you've been exposed, then as a family member or a friend, potentially they've had COVID-19. If you are fully vaccinated, including your booster, then you don't need quarantine, but we do recommend that you wear a mask when you're around others. If you've not been vaccinated or have not had your boosters, then you may ask that you stay home and stay away from other individuals for five days post-exposure, and then wear a mask day 6 through 10. And again, we are recommending that you get tested five days after, to ensure you're going to be safe. We are still doing testing in the community. It's a little more complicated because we're not in every location every week. And so what I'm recommending is, if you're not going to need one of them Monday, Tuesday, or Friday regularly testing in the Charlottesville area, if you're going to go to one of our localities, that you look on our website to see when we're going to be there. It's essentially every other week, but it's not consistent, so it varies a little bit. So if you just fill our website, look under Testing Sites, it will provide you with a full list of where we are by calendar day, so you can know when to show up. And again, you don't need an appointment, although you can make one if you want. These are walk-up tests. As I said, we're vaccinating, we're in every locality every day of the week. At least one day out of the week. We are still doing mobile on the mall, so if you're down on the downtown mall on Wednesdays now, Wednesday afternoon, you can stop by the Big Wheel Van, and we'll be happy to provide a vaccination there. We do have some other things like masks and things that you can also pass out. So take a day that's most convenient and a location that's most convenient, and we're happy to help you get your booster shot or your primary vaccination. And of course, we still have our key health workers that are helping you now, our COVID-19 hotline. And there are other places that you can get a vaccine, just go to vaccines.gov, and you can find out a location that's convenient for you. I would be happy to answer any additional questions that.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Bonds? Dr. Bonds, thank you for your usual thorough report. And I'll tell you, I'm going to get my second booster on Friday. Already got the appointment made, so I encourage everybody else to do the same. That's how we're going to lick this thing.
Absolutely. We are happy to get that, and so I hope to see all of all of those individuals that are eligible for that.
Well, those of us who are old folks, we're all sort of automatically eligible for all this stuff, so. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bonds. Let's see, we now have a proclamation, proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. I was to read it very briefly, whereas in fiscal year 2020, 783 children in Virginia were subjects in reports of child abuse and neglect. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Charlottesville. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Jay Lloyd St. III, Mayor of the City of Charlottesville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Charlottesville, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Signed, dated this April 4th, 2022. And Sue Moffett, our DSS Director, is here, and my notes here say that you will provide comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Snook. We, all of us at the Department of Social Services, together with the families and the community partners that work to serve and protect children in our community, appreciate the acknowledgement. And we hope that many can join us at our annual Pinwheel Garden Planting Event, which is scheduled for April the 13th at 10 o'clock in front of City Hall.
That it? Great, thank you very much. Uh, and I will, yeah, nevermind. Are there any additional items of recognition we need to deal with right now? If not, then time for the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, two, resolution. Approving appropriation of the NEEKC Foundation Family Engagement Support Stipend Grant, $15,000, second reading. Three, resolution. Approving an appropriation for COVID homelessness emergency response program funding, CHIRP, $200,000, second reading. Four, resolution appropriating funds from the Charlottesville Albemarle Technical Education Center for K-Tech Kitchen Floor Repair, $75,000, second reading. Five, resolution appropriating grant funding of $94,276 from Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for development of a flood resilience plan and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement, second reading. Six, resolution appropriating funding for American Rescue Plan Eligible Local Activities, $536,553.97, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating funding received from the Virginia Department of Social Services for driving and transportation assistance for foster care youth, $13,877, first of two readings. Eight, resolution appropriating additional funding received from Virginia Department of Social Services for the promoting for the promoting Safe and Stable Families Program, $16,435, first of two readings. Nine, resolution appropriating Virginia Tourism Corporation, American Rescue Plan Act Supplemental Funds for the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau, $280,000, first of two readings. Ten, resolution authorizing a refund of $12,866.44 to a taxpaying entity or business for business license taxes paid in error for 2020, first of two readings. Eleven, resolution approving a minor amendment to the city's FY 2020, 2021 CDBG Action Plan to authorize the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority to implement a contingency plan to expend its Community Development Block Grant funding on or before June 30th, 2026, one reading. Twelve, report Land Use and Environmental Planning Committee, LUPAC, semi-annual report. Sorry, my allergies are getting to me.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda just read by the clerk. Note, please, if you are here and you want to be commenting on the budget or anything else not related to this, there will be other opportunities to speak. So that just adds to those 11 items. Each speaker will have up to three minutes in the Zoom webinar. You can select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you're joining us by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you may can press star nine. Are there any speakers? Mr. Dillhart, I'll put you in charge here.
Mayor Snook, I see no hands at the moment.
Okay, well, that, that's fine. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
A move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Wade, is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
That passes 5:00. Next is the city manager report. Is there a report from the city manager's office?
Yes, sir, we have a couple of items. I reported to you last week that we were going to start doing a written city manager's report. And I've asked Ashley and, and Sam to share items from their clusters with you tonight. At future meetings, we will get these reports to you in writing in advance of the meeting, so that you can read them before the meeting. So Ashley, Sam, please report on your items. Ashley?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Snook, Vice Mayor Wade, and council, along with our members of our community who are on. I wanted to provide a few updates on behalf of the city manager focused on several departments. First, organizationally, several key hiring processes are underway within the city to ensure the organization continues to provide excellent service delivery to our community. Those hires include our Director of Communications and Public Engagement, our Director of Human Services, our Director of Human Resources, Director of Information Technology, and the Deputy Director of Communications and Public Engagement. Many of those are moving forward into second round processes, and the rest will be moving into first round shortly. Further, the city has also launched a competitive application process for college students who may be interested in summer 2022 internships with several departments through our employment website. Those are still live and active. The city is also working to potentially secure an ICMA Local Government Management Fellow, and those fellows are recent masters in public administration or masters of public policy graduates who are seeking a one-year opportunity to gain some hands-on experience with local government management. We're quite excited about that opportunity. The city of Charlottesville has re-engaged the University of Virginia's Center for Survey Research within the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service to launch the 2022 Employee Engagement Survey that will hopefully begin its administration later this month. The Office of Equity and Inclusion will be hosting a virtual groundwater session in June of 2022, led by the Racial Equity Institute. The groundwater approach is designed to help people at all levels internalize the reality that we live in a racialized, structured society, and that is what causes racial inequity. Once our staff is able to register any remaining slots, we open to the public, and that training will be free to the community. We will make sure that that information reaches those who need it. We're very excited to announce that the Home to Hope Program Peer Navigators will be participating in the TomTom Festivals tomorrow Charlottesville Services on the Future of Criminal Justice Reform on April 20th, 2022. And our Downtown Job Center will co-host Early Education and Care Panel with Virginia Career Works and City Space on April 8th, 2022, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. One of the five panelists we are delighted to announce will be Charlottesville Department of Social Services Team Member Alyssa Kotel Gordon. The Office of Human Rights held a virtual town hall-style meeting with the public on Thursday, March 24th at 6:30. And the office is additionally excited to welcome a new member of the team, Ms. Victoria McCullough, to fill the vacant full-time role of the community outreach and administrative specialist. Victoria will be assisting with individual service intake and providing service provision, in addition to working with the director to develop outreach initiatives. The Department of Human Services would like to make sure that the community is aware that our Community Attention Foster Families Program is currently and intentionally engaging in foster parent recruitment efforts, which include media spots, partnership with Vinegar Hill Magazine, and numerous community outreach activities to come this quarter. Their efforts are focused on increasing the number of families of color to foster children, as well as the number of families who are willing to support LGBTQIA+ children and teens. If any member of the community is interested in learning more about the opportunity to engage in a child's life through fostering, please come to the next information session to be held on April 13th, 2022 via Zoom, beginning at 6:00 p.m. and more information can be found on our website. Finally, the Department of Information Technology is proud to announce two recent hires. Ms. Omenata as a Department of Information Security Engineer, who will be devoted to cybersecurity, as well as Ms. Maria Weiss, the IT Operations Manager. The team is also happy to welcome the return of former retiree Ms. Barbara Sights to take on project mapping of their business processes and developing and updating procedures. During the month of April 2022, the IT team has several cybersecurity initiatives taking place over the next few weeks that will include completing the ransomware protection project and pushing out annual cybersecurity for the city staff. And those products are a key component in the department's multi-layered approach. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. Ms. Marshall.
Uh, good evening again, council and community members. Uh, have a. Series of reports to share as well, um, from the city manager's office. Just want to share that the neighborhood leaders, uh, group, uh, that has been. Had been meeting in years past and has gotten off track, but we did have a couple of meetings last year. We will be resuming our quarterly schedule, uh, with the first meeting for this year being held on April twenty eighth. Any, uh, community leaders that have been a part of this, uh, should have been, should have received invitations by now. And if there is anyone listening that feels as though they should have been, uh, provided an invite on that list and reach out to the city manager's office and we can update that information. And we look forward to rebooting that process for going forward. Uh, from our environmental sustainability division, just want to make it known to the public that the G H G emissions data that we have been. Tracking on the inventory webpage has been updated. That, uh, is something that we know that people have expressed some interest in being able to see, so that information's been updated for more recent, uh, information. So take a look. Public, Public Works is testing an updated street sweeping schedule, uh, by establishing specific dates so residents can better coordinate parking arrangements. Uh, and then the team will be able to do more curb-to-curb sweeping. Uh, the map has been posted on Twitter at hashtag CvillePW and on the Public Works webpage. And you can always call in to Public Works if you needed to, uh, ask a specific question about your particular neighborhood. In the engineering division, our leadership and project management teams are completing a review of our VDOT program ahead of a deep dive with VDOT that's scheduled for later this month. We anticipate some changes that we'll be bringing to council in regards to how we manage those, uh, projects going forward. Uh, and we're looking forward to being able to make sure that everything is in good, uh, working order with VDOT. So this is important for us and. Being able to maintain that relationship and as some of the council members have reported. It's very important that we are ready to deal with the flow of additional funds that are going to become available and they'll particularly come through VDOT. So we want to make sure that we check in with them. The Fifth Street Alternative Street Study, uh, Fifth Street Alternative Study, uh, has been contracted and staff is working with our vendor to. Begin that work. Uh, there'll be some community conversations coming up in April and May and they will, uh, as a team will be presenting to council. At the second meeting in May, so there'll be an opportunity to see what options we may be able to consider for going forward. Transit, um, has been able to initiate the feasibility study that you all heard from, uh, Director Williams at his January work session. That process has begun with Kimberly Horn as the contractor. Uh, they'll be able to get that analysis done. And we look forward to getting the reports of that and then shifting right into the implementation plan that he also, uh, discussed, uh, as a next step. In addition, I was able to join the team at Transit, uh, for their, um. Intake session to kick off their FTA triennial review. That process will conclude in, on the fourteenth. Uh, we'll have an exit review before the final report comes a few months from now. It's a chance for us to just check our relationship with FTA to determine what things we may or may not be in compliance on. And get those things, uh, in working order. Again, wanting to make sure that we're ready for the flow of money, money that's coming. And, and this review will help us make sure that we are, uh, where we should be. Um, Utilities is celebrating a great moment in that they gave out two hundred and fifty trees that were done through donation. As a part of an energy-saving trees program, they provided free trees to residents in support of Arbor Day. Utility staff worked with the tree commission to determine the most suitable tree species and got those out and they went out as quickly as they told people they were available. So we were very happy to see, uh, folks taking advantage of that opportunity. And then, um, the Office of Community Solutions is working on, uh, getting the next funding rounds for home CDBG. Uh, those recommendations will be coming from the, from, from the task force to council for consideration at the next meeting. In addition, the action plan, public comment period has been advertised and the public hearing will be held on the, at the May second meeting. And they're in the process, the team is in the process of getting RFPs ready for home art funds and home Chodo funds. And reminder that the home art funds can be used to target zero percent AMI projects. So if there's anyone out there. In the homeless space that is interested in doing some work there, we would be interested in seeing proposals from them as well. And then the last update is from the fire department. Um, a lot of plans and, uh, reviews and things underway. Fire Department has initiated its long-range master plan, uh, with their consultant, Emergency Services Consulting International. They'll be having a preliminary kickoff meeting with stakeholders later this month to review, uh, the scope of work. And that project begins in May and we will expect to have that long-range plan in October.
Thank you both very much. Um, Mayor, Council, I, uh, we will send the written copies of these reports for your review. Uh, and, uh, I, I think it provided a lot of good meat in terms of what's happening. You know, throughout the city and thank you, uh, Ashley and, and Sam for, for digging in on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Sanders, Ms. Marshall. Um, counselors, any comments?
No comments. Appreciate the, the update. I think this is, um, is great. The, the city is. Is moving. We're doing things. We're taking care of business. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, I appreciate the update. Very helpful.
All right. So, next item on the agenda is Community Matters. Uh, we had no pre-registered speakers, so there are sixteen speaking slots for Community Matters. Topics may not include public hearing items because those are things we'll talk about in a few minutes. Included those three public hearings will be, well, number one, changing the central absentee voter precinct. Number two, the meals tax. Number three, the fiscal year twenty twenty three city budget. If you would like to speak on any topic other than those, each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. So we'll now open it up to speakers. If you'd like to speak, you can select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar. To be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, you may press star nine. Mr. Dillhart? All yours.
Mayor Snook, I see no hands once again at this moment.
So all the folks out there must be wanting to talk about one of those three other topics. All right, so let's move on to that first public hearing. First public hearing is to amend and reordain chapter nine, the election section. To designate the central absentee voter district location, moving it from City Hall to City Space. Uh, Taylor Yow will introduce the item.
Hello, I am Taylor Yow. I am the general registrar here for the city of Charlottesville and this is Anne Hemingway, our vice chair for the city of Charlottesville's Electoral Board. Um, I am here to introduce, uh, the moving of cap from the city hall into the ba- from the basement conference room. To City Space, um, pursuant with Virginia Code twenty four point two dash one twenty nine. Any, uh, move to a polling place or change to a polling place does have to be brought up and changed in a public meeting, having a public hearing. Um, the biggest thing we want everyone to make sure that they know is this changes absolutely nothing with where you vote and where you cast your ballot. This is cap only pursuant to Election Day. So on Election Day, this is where any absentee ballots are processed and, uh, sent through a central scanner. So for early voting, it will still take place in our office and then all ballots will still be accepted at our office. Um, the main reason we have done this for the past three elections, so starting in November of twenty twenty was due to COVID. Um, keeping everyone out of City Hall, having a bigger room in City Space for more airflow. And with the increase of early voting, uh, and absentee voting with the, um, enactment of, in, starting July of twenty twenty. With no excuse absentee early voting, um, anyone could send in a ballot early. And then, so this increased our numbers tenfold, so we needed additional election officers. We also have additional poll watchers and observers now that need the extra space, so that's why this needs to be a permanent change over to City Space. In order for a better flow and to better, um, for a better process of just Election Day and early voting.
Thank you, Ms. Yell. Ms. Hemingway, is there anything you would like to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. It's just if anybody has any questions, um, we're both here to answer.
Counselors, have any questions?
Yeah, um, just a, a comment. I assume that, you know, I think that the previous location, you know, people could just kind of. Park. It was a few steps and they could go in. Um, there were some steps, but, um, you know, there's a ramp and things that. Do you anticipate any? And extra? Problems because there's no like a parking space like right next to City Space, you know, um, there is a. A street but it doesn't go through anyway. I assume y'all looked at all of that.
Uh, we did, but because it's not active voters going in and out, we do not foresee that being an issue, so this is more where, um. Party representatives would be, uh, anyone from the general public can come, they just typically don't. It's a very boring, very dull day. Um, but there is a ramp, so it is accessible in that sense. There is no elevator, but there is a ramp, um, accessible to City Space.
And the election officials that are part of the central absentee, uh, ballot precinct. It can park in the parking garage and just be there. And they're really there all day long.
Yeah.
Um, and all day for early, for the early processing of the ballots and stuff. It's really a processing center.
Processing. You don't have to be.
The voters will continue to vote at City, at, in this registrar's office here.
This is so you don't have to be in the city hall conference room processing in that weird little conference room corner.
Correct.
Not really anything to do with where voting takes place in the annex.
Correct.
But it's just so that you can spread out better and have people and as we've hopefully gotten more voter turnout over the last couple of years. You've got more to process.
Right. Yes, and one of the major things, I think I, um, hit on it a little bit, is that having City Space with it being much larger. We saw this past year a huge increase in the number of party representatives and observers. And so with how the basement conference room is laid out, it was just not a good space in order to observe the process and how ballots were scanned.
Yeah.
And we.
So I got.
Presidential election, we had. Almost, what, fifty percent of the ballots were early voting ballots. That's dropped a lot in the last couple of elections. But I anticipate as we go forward, especially those, um, those federal elections, we, the absentee ballot. Processing will continue to be a, a major event for this office.
So I got a little bit ahead of us. We were supposed to have gone into the public hearing piece of it first before we were getting issues from counselors, but, uh. So if there is anybody who would like to speak on this topic, now is the time, again. Uh, raise hand in the Zoom webinar or press star nine on your phone. Uh, Mr. Dillhart, anybody, uh, interested in this topic?
There's not appear to be any takers.
Okay. Well, so this is the first of two readings and the second reading will be held in May. I don't know which, which one of the May meetings it will be. Does it matter to anything in your timeline, Ms. Yell, which May meeting it would be?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay.
As I say, this might be more of a question for Katrina Carlson.
I believe I'm aiming to have it at the May second, um, meeting, Mr. Snook.
Okay, well, we'll be here. Okay, so the matter will come back for council in, on May second or thereafter for a vote. Uh, so passing it on to the next meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next is consideration of an amendment to the city code, second third to thirty dash two eighty-three to increase. The local excise tax imposed upon the sale of meals from six percent to six and a half percent. Again, the first of two readings. Uh, just very briefly, we have been looking at other ways that we can. Uh, perhaps raise some additional funds to meet, among other things, the capital needs. The need to build schools and so on, and one of the suggestions was to increase our meals tax from six percent to six and a half percent. This would bring in roughly one point two, one point two five million dollars a year. Mo- most of the taxes, most of the meals taxes by cities in the state of Virginia. Are either six and a half, six percent or six and a half percent. So we're, either way, we're still pretty much in the average range. Um, that's the, the general issue. Uh, we will also be having a hearing immediately after this to talk about the city budget. Uh, and if you feel like you've got something that kind of blends from one to the other. Um, you know, I, I don't much care which time you speak. We'd, we'd like to hear from you either time. Um, so we'll now open the public hearing as to the meals tax. Mr. Dillhart, anybody wanting to talk about this topic?
Mayor Snook, I do not see any hands.
Okay, um, and obviously because it's interrelated with the budget, if somebody later on says, you know, I really want to say something about the meals tax. The budget public hearing is still an appropriate time to do that. So let's go on and talk about the, uh, FY twenty twenty three city budget and annual appropriation. Uh, Ms. Hamel, I'm told to introduce you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Rogers is going to kick us off.
Okay.
Uh, we've discussed this mayor and council, the budget, uh, several times and, uh. I've given you a summary of what the city manager's proposed budget is. Uh, we sent you a budget with, uh, two hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-one, uh, thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, as the general fund budget, it included a tax amount advertised at one dollar and five cents. That would be a ten cent, uh, increase. Uh, we reduced the personnel property tax rate. Uh, from, uh, the, the standard down to about two hundred thousand dollars, I think, was left in that. And there were no other tax increases included. And we tried to cover, uh, uh, the school construction, uh. Reconfiguration project and a number of other items that had been discussed by council as, as priorities. And, uh, the nine point two million dollars that would be generated from a ten cent, uh, tax increase. Uh, was unallocated, uh, for determination by council. So Chrissy, you want to go into a couple of slides, uh, that we shared with them last week?
Sure, I just need permission to share my screen, please.
I can say fine, but I don't have the authority.
All right. Okay, so these are the points that, uh, Mr. Rogers just highlighted for you. Going to move on. Uh, we talked a little bit last week about some revenue enhancements. Uh, we've revised our projections a little bit. We have another. Month under our belt in terms of revenue collections. Uh, so this is the same slide we talked about last Thursday. Um, we're seeing, uh, slight decline in the Virginia Communication, Sales and Use Tax. Um, if council decides to make no changes to personal property. We're estimating, uh, right now that would be an additional two million dollars of, uh, tax revenue. We're also continuing to see, um, increases in utility tax, sales and use tax, lodging and meals. Again, these are, um, a direct result of, uh, COVID and our recovery being better than we originally anticipated. And additionally, um, in the business, uh, and professional license, that's about another three hundred thousand. So. Again, if we, um, move forward and council chooses not to change the personal property tax rate, we'll be looking at. Um, just over three point seven million dollars of new revenue that we can use to amend what's currently in the city manager's proposed budget. We also presented to you a five-year, uh, proposed capital improvements plan. The dollars for twenty-three were just over twenty-three point nine million dollars. The five-year total is one point five seven. Um, that does include the seventy-five million budget for the school reconfiguration project. And as we have talked about through many scenarios, we know that in any of those cases, uh, revenue enhancements are needed. We also last week, uh, brought for your consideration, uh, just notes that we had heard over the course of the work sessions. Several potential amendments to the C I P, uh, the Stribling Avenue Project, the Meadow Creek Trail. Uh, we looked at a scenario for the school reconfiguration project at a price tag of sixty-eight point eight. And we also talked about two project requests that PHA brought forward for affordable housing. Again, this was the slide that we, where we talked about the potential amendments. Again, this was the slide that we where we talked about the potential amendments for the school reconfiguration project. Um, again, not a recommendation, but just hearing some consensus around the sixty-eight eight. The and the idea of funding um somewhere in the fifty million dollar range with bonds. These were two different scenarios, um one in which you could fund an annual increase uh in debt service over a three-year period. Or you could do a um one-time tax increase and the equivalents of those are marked here. And um we're rounding the corner. We're almost there. We have a work session scheduled for this Thursday night. Uh, at six P M, we'll we'll be talking about the remaining issues and hopefully wrapping up. The public has attended uh is invited to attend. And then on April twelfth, council will be making a vote for formal adoption. And that's all our presentation that we have.
Okay. Thank you. So I will now open the public hearing. And uh, Mr. Delahunt, we're ready for the first speaker.
Our first speaker will be Alexander Bruner. Alexander, you're on with council.
All right. Good evening, councilors, and and thank you for your tremendous service to this community. My name is Alex Bruner. I am a lifelong resident, born and raised here and now raising a family of my own in the city. I previously served Charlottesville for five years as a police officer and currently sit on the Charlottesville Police Foundation Board, but today I come to you as a concerned citizen. Last week, I sent you a detailed email and letter as well as a supporting spreadsheet for reference. I asked that you kindly read it in full, but knowing you are pressed for time, I'm here to share the core of that message with you and the others listening tonight. During council meetings in March, several people used the public comment period to advocate for reduced police staffing and funding. Their arguments focused on the fact that Charlottesville is an outlier compared to several regional cities in spending per resident and number of officers per ten thousand residents. This is true, but that argument does not consider the unfortunate truth that, according to FBI statistics, Charlottesville's crime rate and especially our violent crime rate is far higher than our regional peers. Plotting department size against the crimes in each jurisdiction is a much better measure of how much work each department must handle. That plot shows that, in fact, the department's desired level of staffing and funding is perfectly in line with other cities in our region. Today's actual staffing levels in the upper eighties to low nineties puts us well below the standard set by our neighbors. Next, we should compare the number of sworn officers in each department against the population and violent crime rate of each city. We have nearly the same populations as Harrisonburg and Blacksburg, yet our violent crime rate is about twice that of Harrisonburg, seven times that of Blacksburg, and four times that of Albemarle County. If Charlottesville had two to seven times the number of house fires as Roanoke and Lynchburg, I would expect our fire department to be proportionally larger. We should feel the same way about our police department. We also cannot assume police budgets are an apples-to-apples comparison. There are many factors which may drive up a budget. For example, the need to hire and train dozens of officers over the last several years, which costs much more than retaining them. CPD also invests heavily in training such as forensic investigations, critical to both victim and suspect rights and crisis intervention, critical to police interactions with some of our most vulnerable community members. Both take money and resources to implement, yet their value to the community cannot be overstated. To provide the best possible services to the community, we need to hire, train, and retain the best people we can get. The department is hemorrhaging officers. In October of twenty twenty-one, former managers Chip Boils told the council that ninety-three employees had resigned from CBD over the previous three years and seventy-four had been hired. The department has only about ninety officers today. Not only should we not cut the department budget, we should increase it in support of better pay and benefits to help with recruiting and retention. These men and women run toward the sound of gunfire, and that seems to be happening a lot lately. They help us when we have nowhere else to turn, and now they need our help. Please fully fund the police department's budget request and help our officers serve the community to the best of their abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruner.
Our next speaker will be Sarah Elaine Hart. Sarah, you're on with council.
Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of Charlottesville City and also a proud former employee of Charlottesville City Schools. And um I want to thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of the many challenging uh puzzles you have in front of you in in regards to the budget. Charlottesville City Schools are tremendous. They are full of outstanding, hardworking educators and students. And unfortunately, our facilities don't reflect this reality, and it is such a shame. Buford students and teachers deserve a functioning, non-leaking, up to twenty twenty-two standard building that is future-oriented and planning for growth. Please protect the investments that are collectively made in the young people, by their families, by this community. Please don't delay any further in this important reconfiguration plot project. There's a half a century old building that needs repair, and only you can help us get to it. So I'm asking you, as a former employee of Charlottesville City Schools, a future parent of Charlottesville City School student, to fully fund the reconfiguration project for Buford and support Charlottesville Public Schools. So please raise my meal taxes, pla- please raise my property taxes um to support our children. I don't believe that could be a a misinvestment in any way. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
A reminder, if you wish to speak, you may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or press star nine if you're joining by phone. Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands at the moment. Okay, Brad Slocombe has just raised his hand. Brad, you're on with council.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, my name's uh Brad Slocombe. I'm currently a resident of Stanton, but as I've noted previously, I lived in Charlottesville for most of the past decade and commute into work uh in the city uh five days a week and often visit on the weekends. Previously commented uh in support of uh looking closely at the transit budget and in particular uh funding the expansions needed to the city fleet uh to reach the uh well, it sounds like thirty minutes is is a current goal based on staffing, but eventually fifteen-minute service, particularly on critical routes. But I'd also like to call attention uh to two other areas. The other one that I previously commented on of funding the necessary preliminary uh federal transit study, uh which I believe uh my last figure was about two hundred thousand dollars necessary to look towards expanding the fleet to include electric vehicle buses. Um, what I'd like to also note is that looking at the last uh five years or so of the uh police department budget, they consistently overbudget uh to roughly an average of five hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, and so what I'd like to propose is that uh that spending amount, I think that you could safely reduce the budget, particularly in the area of operations and some of the fixed costs and uh more than comfortably afford the transit study needed to uh shift the uh cat fleet towards electric buses. So I'd urge you to look closely at the ways that the police budget or that the way the police department is spending their money and note where those areas could also bring a lot of benefit uh to the residents and folks who commute into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocombe.
There are no additional hands.
So there are no further speakers. The public hearing is now closed. Council will convene on Thursday, April seventh for a final budget work session. Uh, when I hope that at that, at the end of that work session, we will have a final set of numbers so that when we convene on April twelfth, it will be a very short meeting because we will already have worked everything out. I note that it kind of has to be a short meeting because we're expected to be in front of the planning commission at six o'clock. And so unless we're going to hold up progress on the planning commission side of things, uh, we we will need to make short work of it uh at five thirty on the twelfth, which means come prepared to make decisions on Thursday, the seventh. So the next item on the agenda is an ordinance to appropriate state funds to uh replace the Dairy Road Bridge. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city councilors, city manager. Um, I am Tony Edwards, Development Services Manager, Public Works. Uh, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, C T B, through the State of Good Repair grant funding awarded the city seven point two million for the full replacement of Dairy Road Bridge. This is a hundred percent state and federal funding, no local match required. Based on its substandard nineteen fifty-four design and um load restrictions of seventeen tons for a single unit vehicle and twenty-five tons for a semi-trailer, it received a condition rating of four for the deck and therefore qualified for the S G R funding. In twenty fifteen, the sidewalk was replaced by a separate bike and pedestrian bridge next to the original structure, which will provide public access during construction. The government has authorized a design-build project methodology to construct, which will provide additional advantages to the process uh over the standard method. This appropriation will allow staff to start design phase. The process will uh provide a public hearing for uh design input as well as regular public notifications and updates during construction. Again, there's no impacts on the available funds, availability of funds, and it will uh be added to the FY twenty-three twenty-seven C I P plan. And I'll take any questions, you may.
Councilors, have any questions for Mr. Edwards?
Uh, yes, sir. So this is in the current C I P?
Um, it will be added to that as I understand.
Okay, so when was the work supposed to happen? I'm sorry, I I did read the packet, but I'm when are when are you planning to do the project, to begin the project?
Yeah, with the um appropriation of these funds, then we would start the process for um getting a engineering design designer team together. Um, basically with a design-build process, you can bring in your uh contractor with the design team and operate that concurrently together so that ultimately you'll get a better design is the idea behind the methodologies.
The hope then would be to actually get the construction done when?
Um, it it would depend on how quickly the design phase would go, of course. But yeah, we're 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 looking to, there's no right-of-way phase to it, so soon as the design's complete, we would go right into construction.
So this could happen within a year?
Um, we would hope that we could start that process close to a year.
Okay. But I I guess just in terms of if this all goes through, you would have a design phase, a design-build um uh delivery methodology in the notion would be to move as urgently or quickly as possible. I would think the design for something like that would be less than six months. And so that presumably the actual construction would follow thereafter. I guess I'm just trying to recall. I don't have the budget book in front of me. Uh, is this in the C I P for the next five years? Maybe Ms. Hamel could answer that.
So um it is not in the current five-year plan as there were, um, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there were some previous dollars that were allocated to this and then uh this agenda item will amend the C I P to include the new expenditures and the offset of the revenue from B dot. So it's not in the current draft of the five-year plan, um, but it will be if you all vote to. It won't be in the plan as a new addition, um, but it will go on the books as part of the C I P with an offsetting revenue. There are no city dol- additional city dollars being requested here.
Okay, so the this entire um project is being funded ultimately through from the state.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any thought that the footprint of the bridge would change?
Uh, it may slightly uh where we have existing right-of-way that we could, you know, have some wiggle room to do that. Uh, but we will be somewhat restricted by um the pedestrian bicycle that's next to it.
And because I know I I'm the only member of council who lives on the other side of that bridge. So let me just ask you, when it gets around, when when somebody gets around to actually replacing it, is there a a rough idea of how long we would be having to take an alternative route to get over to Greenbrier? Is this going to be a week or two weeks or a month or two months, or how long would the construction process take?
That that will definitely be one of our earliest uh phases of conversation with the team once we get them on board to see what's doable.
Well, let let me cast an early vote for one week rather than two months, given that choice.
And and this may all probably be a given that you work closely with the um school department because we have a ton of great uh buses um going across that bridge on a daily basis. So, you know, I know you can probably start day after school, let's out and take advantage of those days, but you know, just factor that in, that's a vital link.
Absolutely. Yeah, we um we went through that process when we put the Ped Bike Bridge in and and coordinated with them very well about that, so.
Good.
We'll we'll do that again, for sure.
Any other questions or comments from council? So should we move this to the April eighteenth consent agenda for the second reading? Everybody okay with that? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund or CAF and the Housing Advisory Committee Structure Clarification. Uh, Alex Akafuna, Community Solutions, will present.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I I think this would be as good a time as any for me to read my little statement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go for it.
Sorry to take away from the meeting, but very briefly, uh, after consulting with the city attorney and in the interests of full transparency, I want to acknowledge that a member of my family has been an employee of Leap. That family member has recently resigned from his job to pursue other interests. His last day at Leap is this Wednesday. I do not believe this connection prevents me from participating in the ensuing conversation impartially. Thank you.
Thank you. And Virginia law uh favors disclosure over recusal in situations like this, and so the disclosure is entirely appropriate. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, uh, councilors, the city manager. Tonight, we are bringing you a a follow-up to your discussion and recommendation uh in the comprehensive plan. The uh, the this recommendation is part of uh the Affordable Housing Plan, uh which is an element in the comprehensive plan that was adopted by the city council on November fifteenth two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, specifically, there are two um uh two provisions uh that were answered pointing out here uh regarding the uh Affordable Housing Plan. One was uh to reform the structure and function of Housing Advisory Committee to represent a broader range of viewpoints and focus on housing policies. And then reduce the number of persons on HAC committee from twenty-one to between ten and fifteen. The other specific uh uh point uh recommended by uh uh the Affordable Housing Plan was uh to empower a new nine-member Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Advisory Committee that will work with both staff and the community representatives to make recommendation on both priorities and distribution of CAF funds. On December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city council had a workshop on this subject on the restructuring of HAC and then setting up a CAF Advisory Committee. Council followed the recommendations in the Affordable Housing Plan as adopted by the uh within the comprehensive plan and expressed their preferences to reduce the number of people on HAC committee from twenty-one to eleven with a council representative who will be a non-voting member, bringing the total number of uh preferred membership as uh recommended by, as approved uh by council to twelve. Council also expressed their preferences in creating a nine-member Affordable Housing Advisory, Affordable Housing Fund Advisory Committee as recommended in the housing chapter of your comprehensive plan. The membership compositions and categories for both HAC and the CAF, new CAF Advisory Committee are spelled out in the staff report. And uh essentially, uh And uh essentially, uh it includes a uh nine folks uh 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 for the CAF Committee and uh eleven representative from various categories for HAC. Uh plus one member of the city council who will be a non-voting member. The request aligns with the Affordable Housing Plan and Comprehensive Plan adopted by the city council in two thousand and twenty one. And consistent with the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty strategic plan goals. There are a couple of motions in the staff report with two resolutions, one of which is the reduction of the number of uh uh persons within the HAC Committee. And then uh uh the categories recommended in terms of uh restaffing or reappointing members of the uh restructured uh HAC Committee. There is also another resolution creating the um Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Advisory Committee, which is also uh required to be approved by the city council tonight. With that, I will be glad to answer the city council questions.
Counselors, got any questions or comments?
Uh just one um comment, which we've discussed in the past, but just interested to hear other counselors thoughts of um you know, the the role of CRHA having um you know, a board on that seat, given, you know, their unique connection to the affordable housing projects we're invested in and their unique connection to the city. I know that's an idea we've sort of sort of discussed in the past, but don't know others' thoughts or the pros and cons of that, but um it seems like something potentially worthwhile for us to pursue.
Yeah, yeah, I'd definitely be in in su- supportive of that. Um I I think that that is my understanding that we created, but Charlottesville had to create the Housing Authority at some point in the past. And um and so we just, we should take full advantage of it being our kind of housing agency. I think that they're in the game of addressing the zero to zero to zero to thirty percent, you know, um am I affordable housing in particular? So I will be in support of them being part of it.
I guess one the one question that I would have, and I I have not thought about it particularly, but we we're establishing this or reestablishing the Housing Advisory Committee uh with four specific purposes: to advise the city council as to affordable housing needs that are not being served within the city of Charlottesville. To recommend ways to encourage for-profit housing sec- the for-profit housing sector. To provide a variety of affordable housing opportunities. To advise city council as to the need to improve or delete existing programs, support or assistance. And to advise city council on the potential for regional interjurisdictional cooperation in affordable housing programs. I I wonder whether CRHA would have, would be more useful to us not being sort of swallowed up in the opinion that comes out of the Housing Advisory Committee. Or whether we would rather they were an independent voice. Just asking, I I haven't thought about it particularly, but I'm not sure what it what it benefits council to have them on on the hack.
Wouldn't they be possibly on it as one of the three recip- one of the three members of affordable housing providers slash recipients of funds? Wouldn't they qualify for that seat in the reconfiguration?
Yeah, affordable house, you you are, you are referring to the first category, affordable housing provider.
Right, slash recipient of funds.
Yes.
I mean, wouldn't that fit CRHA?
That's correct. But I don't think he will be a member unless council decides, and the city attorney can correct me. Maybe a staff of CRHA um or uh somebody on their board.
What does it gain CRHA to be a part of the the committee?
I don't know, uh there is no special benefits uh I see um uh to uh to affordable housing provider, you know, uh I think um uh they are expected unless the person has ulterior motive, but I think anybody who's serving on that advisory committee is expected to discharge their responsibilities in terms of addressing public goods, just like the city council is doing. And if you have a conflict of interest, you disclose that. So I'm not sure uh whether there is any particular uh benefit that the CRHA is looking to derive from it rather than contributing to fo- policy formulation.
And I I would just like to note that technically while no governmental entity is a for-profit entity. Um CRHA is is sort of a, it's really more a governmental authority or a governmental entity than it is a nonprofit. So um the my understanding is that the resolution was drafted with sort of private sector nonprofit entities in mind. That's not to say that the resolution can't be amended, but um that first category in the resolution was drafted. And then the second thing that you all might be interested in is the very first Housing Advisory Committee, when it was formed many, many years ago, was actually formed to be advisory to the Housing Authority. Um and um so uh it's evolved over the years, in particular as the Housing Authority developed as an independent entity, city council wanted its own advisory body. But the the very first Housing Advisory Committee that was ever formed was to provide input to the Housing Authority as to how they could um best serve the needs of the community. So that's just a fun fact, I guess, tidbit, so.
I mean, I can see value in CRHA being at that table in if, especially if we want to focus on people stepping out of and working out of being in public housing. And CRHA being very aware of the barriers and the issues that those who are living in public housing face leaving public housing. Um and I think that's, and they will always be probably the foremost people on that. And seeing that as time changes and everything. Um so I could see them being a very valuable member to that. Um so, yeah.
I mean, I I am not an expert on the hack by any means. I've sat in on a few meetings by Zoom, but that's about it. And I don't have a real good clear idea in my own mind of how I think uh new, you know, the the this newly constituted group would function. So I I really don't have any particular opinion about it, but I'm just just kind of wondering whether that accomplishes anything that we want to accomplish.
So is that um the opinion of the city council to um to amend the uh resolution to include uh requests by Council of Pain?
Well, yeah, I think so. It sounds like three of us, at least three of us su- supported, but you you know, we can if now is the time to discuss it, I'm I'm, we can do it now. You know, if it if it doesn't do any, you know, if it's not anything. I don't see have having a moment would would be any negative process, you know, towards this new committee or anything. So I think it would only add to it, so.
If I could, and I apologize, uh I I guess I should have had this conversation with Counselor Payne earlier. So this, could you just give me like the capsule version of why we're doing this? I I realize that this was sort of worked out in a work session back in December, and I just have not had a chance to like understand the the backstory. You know, you don't have to go into a lot of detail, but what's really the the rationale for this?
Oh, I I guess in my view, the bottom line is just to try to have um a body that's more effective at giving um city council guidance on how to implement our affordable housing strategy and meet our affordable housing goals. And these are just changes meant to have it be a more effective and efficient body in doing that for us.
And then the CAF Committee i- is now completely separate from the uh hack?
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess currently it's part of or like a subcommittee or something?
No, it's a, it's a freestanding uh independent uh um committee.
Okay, so that part remains the same then. No, it was the hack and the CAF are two distinct entities.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I apologize for my my lack of knowledge on this. Um and Counselor Payne, your your point is that having CRHA uh on as a standing member of the hack um would allow us to make better policy, you think?
Correct, and you know, I've had brief conversations with CRHA, um you know, and I yeah, I don't know if if Mr. Sales here and want to or be able to speak to any of it at all, but I know they saw, they potentially saw some value there. Um of course, it's our decision, but that's, you know, had some conversation with them and they saw some value for, you know, some of the points that Vice Mayor Wade raised, um as well as just how they involved involved they are and will be and you know, us meeting our affordable housing goals.
Well, I mean, I don't I don't have a strong feeling about it one way or the other. I just, I I I'm not quite sure I understand the reason for uh that that they would want to be embedded in the process, but if if that's the that's the folks desire, that's fine. Or do we want to accomplish it by including them within category one and saying that they will be one of the nonprofit entities uh who are actively engaged in the construction or renting of affordable housing units within the city, tweaking that language so that it's not a contradiction with uh with CRHA?
If I could, counselors, I'd just add that part of uh earlier conversation clarity is what we need more than anything. So if the if the decision is that you want to reserve a seat for CRHA, it would be helpful if you would designate that as a separate line item so that we don't miss that going forward.
Good point.
And so the total number would be twelve?
Uh I think uh I think it would be a good idea to keep it at eleven, but make uh the first la- the first category uh uh which is three, one of which will be reserved for CRHA.
Or would you say CRHA plus two?
Exactly.
Yeah, I almost wonder whether it should be a total of twelve.
You don't want even numbers.
Yeah, you don't want, you need an odd number. Um it'll already be twelve members because you'll have a council member without a vote.
I see.
I'm generally not a fan of committees that start getting over ten, but you know, eleven is okay, twelve is a little worse than eleven. But I didn't, neither one is is a point where I'm gonna throw a temper tantrum, so.
It was recommended to keep it at eleven sound sounded wor- workable and good to me.
So we would
The question would be in category one, do you want it to say CRHA? Or nonprofit entities, or do you want to say CRHA? And two nonprofit entities?
I vote for the second.
Yeah, I would too. I think that makes more sense.
Michael, what do you think? Your idea?
That would, that would seem fine to me.
And so one Jake, a little bit, okay. All right, so there's one one tweak. Other issues that people have with the uh the draft resolution? So are we, I know we will have separate votes on the resolutions. Do we want to at least discuss the substance of the second resolution before we move on to the votes?
I think there are two separate resolutions, aren't they?
They are. I didn't know whether Mr.
Yeah, they are two, they are two uh resolution. One resolution is a to establish a uh advisory body known as Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Committee.
Do we need to have any sort of public comment or anything on this?
Is not set for a public comment.
So I move the resolution amending and reenacting the city council advisory body known as the Housing Adviser and Committee, subject to the amendment made tonight. Where CRHA is added with in the first line of affordable housing providers, recipients of funds is limited to two with CRHA being the third.
Second.
Is that sufficiently clear, Ms. Robertson? Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Ms. Thomas, you wanna do a vote?
Counselor McGill? Yes. Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so the second resolution deals with the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Committee. And count the kid council advisory body. Do we need to have more of a presentation from staff on that, or do you folks understand what we're doing?
It's, I mean, is my interpretation is it's just making it down so that there's no weird conflicts of interests. So that we have an actual good process for overseeing CAF allocations.
Right. And this is the recommendation from the housing consultant, the affordable housing consultants. And in fact, if you follow a public comment, it's been commented on for years that this is a change that needs to get made. So is there a resolution? Uh is it somebody want to make a motion on that resolution?
I move the resolution establishing a city council advisory body to be known as the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill? Yes. Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
That passes five, nothing. So that got taken care of that. Let's see, next. Uh we have the Affordable Housing Fund Award Recommendations.
Give me again, Counselor Mayor, um this is a uh twenty twenty one, twenty two budget uh item for Affordable Housing uh Fund Program uh in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh Dinofa was issued in January and given a the applicant, the potential applicants, we are given several week, uh about thirty days uh to respond. Uh staff received the seven applications totaling four point six million dollars. And uh there were a couple of review process processes. Uh one was a uh a technical review team established by staff composed of seven members. Uh one person was uh from HAC and then the rest of the uh membership came uh to uh various department within the city government. Um following the review by a city's technical staff committee. Um HAC subcommittee on uh CAF awards also reviewed the the application initially. Uh staff recommendation included the um uh funding hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for PHA. hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for PHA. But uh when HAC reviewed it, half HAC subcommittee uh because PHA didn't apply for light tech for marker project, uh hard committee, subcommittee decided to reallocate the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars uh to uh some of the applicants. And what you have before you includes consolidated recommendation from staff, technical advisory, technical committee and um HAC uh subcommittee for um CAF awards. The uh the right item of uh um uh of point is uh the tier system recommended by the Affordable Housing Fund. Staff followed the tier system of recommending uh try to direct fifty percent of the funding to project that would provide the benefits to people at thirty percent or down to zero. And then also thirty percent of the funding going to projects at sixty percent and then uh twenty percent to project at eighty percent uh uh and between eighty percent and uh and sixty percent. And uh uh the tier system based on staff recommendation included the tier one four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which is about sixty-six percent of the project of the project funding. Tier two, two hundred and forty-five thousand, which is about thirty-two point seven percent of the fund. And then tier three, ten thousand, which is one point three percent of the uh the uh the fund. The project presented, including this request, aligns with the city council strategic plan including affordable housing plan and comprehensive plan that was adopted by the city council in twenty twenty-one. The final recommendation includes a CRHA South First Street Phase Two, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Habitat for Humanity for Down Payment Assistant Programs, seventy-five thousand dollars. Local Energy Alliance Program Lead Homeowner Electrification Assistant twenty-five thou- twenty-five thousand and Local Energy Alliance Program Lead for rent for rent rent rental properties, twenty thousand. In terms of tier two, seven household with incomes of up to sixty percent AMI, CRHA receives fifty thousand dollars. A heap, hundred thousand dollars, lead, twenty-five thousand dollars and uh and then leave for rental occupied uh uh projects, seventy thousand dollars. Then for tier three, leap also get uh additional ten thousand dollars as a result of reallocation of hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have five resolutions attached to the staff report. Uh, council can choose how you intend to adopt the resolution, whether you are going to adopt individually or collectively. But the amounts varies from agency to agency. With that, I would be glad to answer the city council questions.
Questions or comments from council?
Yes, I I'm inclined to follow what's been recommended because I'm confident y'all are thoughtful folks, but could you please help me here? So I'm looking on page. I guess one oh one oh six, one oh seven of the packet. Recommendation, staff recommend city council approve the attached resolutions awarding cap funding. If approved, the funding will support various levels of affordable housing as follows. So what I'm seeing here basically reflects the fact that I guess PHA uh had originally planned to submit and then there was some issue with light tech or whatever. What I'm seeing here in the recommendation is after all that's been washed out, is that correct?
That's correct. The money the money originally meant uh uh hundred and seventy-five thousand was relocated to a other agencies as a result of that because they didn't submit their flight application this year.
Okay, and these are for FY twenty-two, so these are approving projects that are supposed to be happening between, I guess, now and the end of June of this year?
Uh, it's supposed to have been approved, but because we are doing the um the Affordable Housing Performance Study. We delayed the issuing of the NOFA. You know, but uh until we complete the study, but with uh substantial completion of the study, we decided to go ahead and issue uh the NOFA. So the project, this form should have been on the street uh uh by uh before now. Had it not been the performance study of the CAF program.
Okay, so but I guess this will be issued against this year's CIP, I guess, right?
Uh, no, the money is already uh allocated.
Okay, the 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 total sum is allocated, this is the distribution.
Yeah, the money is ready to go. Once we fin- once council takes action on this, um, we start drafting the agreement. Actually, we have a uh the template for the agreement is ready. Uh, once council approved that approves this, we start dropping the amount in the agreement, including a requirements, delivery requirements by the applicants.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? So I gather we need five separate resolutions.
These are first of second readings, right?
Uh, yes, you're correct. So we don't have to actually vote on them at this point. Um, is there agreement to move the five resolutions to the April eighteenth consent agenda for the second reading?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So so done. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, next is sixteen thirteen Grove Street. Um, this is a, I guess, consider a resumption of what we were talking, you know, we were talking about at some length before. Matt, you want to summarize where we are here?
Thank you, Barrett. Yes, Matt Offley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Tonight, you're continuing your conversation from March twenty-first on a proposed rezoning special use permit and critical slope waiver at a project uh referred to as sixteen thirteen Grove Street. This, these three applications are needed to allow the development of twenty-eight units on the property and four apartment buildings. Um, I don't have a formal presentation, but staff's available to answer questions as you can continue your conversation.
Councillors, thoughts?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm just where I met last week. I've gone back and forth with it, could see it both ways, but think where I am just ultimately right now is that um, you know, we're going to be developing an inclusionary zoning program for when things go above buy right density. This is above the buy right density even within our future land use map. And when I look at the level of affordability length, um, how they've structured it, it's just not where I think it would be and hope where we would land when we get the inclusionary zoning and I know the planning commission was split on it and I see the flip side of it too, but gonna land, I think, just got to expect a little bit better in terms of depth of affordability and length of affordability um for a project like this.
What are other councillors' think?
So councillor Payne, your your objection is not that it not to the fact of the increased density in the area, it's that we're not getting out of it in terms of actual affordable units, what what we might want to or should hope to?
That's my opinion, um, but you know, it is, it's difficult because we haven't, we know we're going to do that, but we haven't developed it yet, so um you know, we obviously need to be able to create a clear program or the expectations are clear.
What are the councillors' say?
Well, I was, I'm inclined to um support the proposal.
Yeah, I am as well. I mean, compared to what would happen by right, it seems the density alone would be a valuable thing.
I mean, I I I uh, the affordability piece, I agree with Michael on this, um. And I I don't really, I think, I mean, honestly, even if it gets more deeply affordable, and this is no offense to any students because students need a place to live as well, it's not about that, it's there's nothing in this, I mean, it fits student housing. Um, whether grad students, whether, I mean, there's nothing that's more than likely who's probably going to live there. Um, and or a resident, a hospital resident, hospital intern. Again, no problem with that, but I I don't think we're going to get deeply affordable in this project. Um, and twenty-eight units is is better than what, six or eight? And it's got a good walking distance for somebody who is going to the hospital and working at the hospital. Um, do I wish they would be going more deeply affordable? Yes, I do. Um, but not even knowing quite what the inclusionary zoning is going to be looking at in the future, um, I'm leaning towards it.
My feeling on is kind of the way I kind of agree with the with councillor McGill, um. There are certain places in town where we just have to understand that the the greatest likelihood that people are gonna uh that that the folks who are gonna live there are likely to be students, are likely to be people who have access to to the university, uh either for jobs uh or as students or the and the there can be people who will live there, um, potential nurses, um. You know, other other folks like that. Now, the one, the one thing that concerns me is that, you know, I I can remember fifty years ago when uh admittedly, this is partly a a residue of the racially discriminatory housing patterns when basically, you know, the the folks who lived in Tenth and Page were the orderlies uh and many of the black staff at at the University of Virginia Hospital. Uh, and there is something to be said for saying, well, let's go ahead and and do something that's gonna tell the university employees like that that you can, you can work at the university, you don't have to be uh rich to live in the area and be able to walk there. In fact, being able to to walk there is something that being being uh one of the less well-paid people um that that it would make living there easier. It it's just really tough to try to figure out what use is is likely to be made of that particular area because the other thing that that we keep sort of that I keep coming back to is the condition of the road. Um, it concerns me. It concerns me that I think at some point down the road we, the city, are going to be required to make some improvements to that road uh that perhaps we might not have have to make as long as the property remains undeveloped. On the other hand, uh, we're giving rise to Harry Truman's comment, please just give me a one-handed economist. You got tired of it on the one hand, on the other hand, uh, on the other hand, here, we we've got a situation where where I I I think we come back to the notion of we get twenty more units than we would otherwise get. The the difficulties with the site and with the street, I think, are manageable. Uh, and as I've said before, when you're looking at infill development, you're looking not for the perfect spot, but you're looking for a spot with problems that are manageable. I think the problems are manageable here, uh, and I I'm inclined to to vote for it. So. So we have three separate motions that we have to consider. First is the rezoning request as a second reading. Second is the special use permit, second reading, and third is the cr- critical slope waiver, second reading. Uh, let's deal with the rezoning request first. Is there a motion on the rezoning request?
I move that we approve the rezoning request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councillor McGill? Yes. Councillor Payne?
No.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
That motion passes four to one. Uh, next, a resolution on the special use permit. Can we have a motion on that?
Uh, I move that we approve the special use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Thomas?
Councillor McGill? Yes. Councillor Payne?
No.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that motion also passes four to one. Uh, finally, a resolution for the critical slope waiver. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the um relevant critical slope waiver.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councillor McGill? Yes. Councillor Payne?
No.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
That motion also passes four to one. So that concludes our regular agenda. There are no items of general business, which would be the next thing. Are there any other business items for consideration? And councillors, any questions that you'd like the city manager to follow up on? Recognizing that we'll be gathering again in seventy-two hours to talk about the budget in much more detail.
They know all my questions.
Okay. So we're now back to, uh, the last thing on the agenda is the second community matters portion. We're now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers will have up to three minutes. You can join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star and I if you have joined us by phone. Are there any speakers? Mr. Dill Hunt?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Our first speaker will be David T. David, you are on with city council.
Yeah, go ahead. You're muted.
You know, his hand's been up for quite a while. He might not know what's up.
David?
He does.
Guess we will come back to him.
Okay.
Okay, our next speaker will be Shelby Edwards. Shelby, you're on with council.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon slash evening. My name is Shelby Marie Edwards. I use she, her and hers. I am born and raised in Charlottesville, and I currently serve as the Executive Director of the Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Residents. Today, I will be sharing a few thoughts in regards to the Housing Advisory Committee colloquially referred to as HAC. So on February first, twenty-ten, yep, twenty-ten, the city of Charlottesville adopted goals that they sought to accomplish by twenty-twenty-five in regards to affordable housing. At the time, they named three priorities. One, maintain the number of current um supported affordable housing units. Two, maintain the current ratio of supported affordable units. Two, maintain the current ratio of supported affordable units to total housing units as the city's housing stock grows. That's approximately one supported affordable unit for every ten or ten percent. And the third priority was to increase the ratio of supported affordable units to fifteen percent of total housing units by twenty-twenty-five. The council at the time included Dr. Holly Marie Edwards, who was and will always be my sweet mom. And I bring this up not solely because I enjoy talking about my mother, which I do. But because it is important that we use former conversations on affordable housing to inform our actions. So no matter who or how we choose who sits on the HAC committee, my ask is that we ensure we have seats that are representative of the community. Particularly those who are most marginalized. While I can definitely appreciate the efficiency and efficacy that comes with working in smaller numbers, I want to ensure that we are working towards. Goals set out by the HAC members originally seated while also honoring the circumstances that we find ourselves in today. I will also use this as a space to share that I really hope FAW will maintain its seat on the HAC so that we can continue the work that we do. Um, so per usual, thank you so much for the gift of your time and audience. I appreciate each and every one of you and I hope y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Next up is Brian Campbell. Brian, you are on with council.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Brian Campbell and I'm a resident of the Woolen Mills neighborhood and I'd like to speak about the police budget. We heard earlier this evening from a member of the public who erroneously claimed that the reason the CPD spends so lavishly is Charlottesville's high crime rate. I think as always that a comparison with Lynchburg, a city that is much larger than Charlottesville, employs more police officers than Charlottesville. And yet spends the same on police as Charlottesville is instructive. Per the FBI, Lynchburg has forty violent crimes per ten thousand residents annually compared with Charlottesville's thirty-three point seven. The fact is that until we receive a real detailed budget from the CPD, we cannot say why they spend so extravagantly. Only that they do. There's no other city department that's granted this sort of carte blanche. We should examine why we do so with the CPD. I urge city council to be responsible with the city's finances. Honor their duty to serve the public interest and curb the CPD's budget. I'll email supporting figures this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Our next speaker is Brad Slocum. Brad, you are back on with council.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, uh, Brad Slocum again, uh, Stan resident, but commuted to the city. I just wanted to uh revisit the uh figures that I had cited earlier this evening. I just wanted to correct. I, I believe I may have slightly misspoken on the respective categories of where uh the overspend is. So just to clarify, in the overall CPD budget uh for finished budget years. That is uh going through twenty-twenty-one, about uh two hundred eighty thousand dollars is included. In the salary and benefits category, uh, which uh is uh surplus, if you will, over what the. Actual spend was and then in the other categories, which includes fixed costs. Um, and operational and service expenses that figures closer to uh four hundred ten thousand dollars. Uh, and so I just wanted to make clear where those uh are coming from. However, I do want to cite that in the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three budgets. Uh, both of uh the, the salary and benefits category goes up significantly. And so uh, again, comparing the finished budget years uh through twenty-twenty-one. Uh, to the average of twenty-twenty through the proposed twenty-twenty-three budget. The overspend, if you will, in the uh salary benefits category is closer to seven hundred thousand dollars. And then the uh overspend in the other category all taken together is closer to a hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, and so that would be a total for since twenty-twenty that the uh CPD consistently over budgets. On average, about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so just wanted to uh clarify a little bit on that. And appreciate your time on hearing out those figures. I can supply those if you're interested as well. Those are from the uh CPD's own uh provided budget information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Next up, we have Don Gathers. Don, you are on with council.
Evening, council. Um, just a few quick things this evening. First of all, I know that it's been discussed, it's been, we've ridden this horse for a while, but it's well past time for us to move back to in-person meetings. So as we move through the budgetary process, I hope that whatever expenditures may be necessary to make that happen, that that's looked at. Uh, the public deserves the opportunity, just as other boards and commissions are meeting in person. The, the city council should be meeting in person with the public as well. Also, as we move through the budgetary process, uh, uh, once again, we, this has been discussed and this horse has been ridden for, for many years now. But I would hope that, that this council would be the one that would take up the, uh, the banner of looking towards uh. Uh, offering some sort of stipend to folks who serves on the various boards and committees that you all appoint them to. Uh, it's well past time that that's, that that's been reviewed and looked at. It's uh, it's truly sad that we only have one particular board that's, that's, that's paid any sort of stipend. Uh, for their, their work. Uh, these boards put in, the members of these boards put in a lot of work. Um, Michael, I applaud you tonight, uh, for your votes, uh, just recently. Uh, it's, 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 it's sad. Uh, but it seems as though you're the only one who, who cares tonight about uh the future of, of. Of blacks and other minorities and low-income folks being able to continue to live here in the city. And that's, that's very telling. What's also is very telling is the fact that no one wanted to speak during the first public commentary session. I hope that that sends a message to you all that it may be that people want, either don't trust you, or they don't feel that they're heard. Or they don't feel that you all care about what really is being said and how the citizens that you all were elected to represent. How they truly feel about the job and the effectiveness that you're doing. Uh, that's all that I have for this evening. I will be forwarding some other emails. Oh, there's one other thing. It is way past time, well past time, that as, that council and city manager demand. A line item budget from CPD, just as we do every other entity that receives public funding. It's, it is absolutely ridiculous that, that, that one, that one entity is not mandated to do the same thing. So I, I would urge and encourage US council to urge and encourage the city manager to require that as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gathers.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands. All right, but it actually, sorry, it looks like David T. has once again raised his hand, so we will try again. David, you are on with council.
Hi, council, I apologize for the delay. I'm a uh geriatric millennial, so my Zoom use is not the most uh efficient and. But I, I, I appreciate it and uh, yeah, so I'm uh born and raised in Charlottesville, longtime resident until I graduated CHS. And went to the army, but I've since come back and uh, I've started a business and I own a business on the downtown mall and with another location. I'm looking to expand onto Ellie Wood Avenue. Um, and I, I, you know, this is my hometown, so I really appreciate and love the city. But there are some concerns that I, I know, you know, sourcing, um, employees myself. And I, I've recognized and seen some um issues with sourcing, you know, local police officers. And I think that's a, uh, issue that can really easily be solved pretty bipartisan and, and un, you know. Not under, you know, a lot of controversy by just, you know, enacting some funds to appropriately source. You know, and competitively source uh good applicants for the police department. Um, just, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if, uh, you know, there's, I just kind of want my voice being heard as, you know. Local business owner that relies heavily on his retail fronts. Uh, having uh some sort of police presence or presence patrol, you know, is definitely behooves me as a. You know, contributing taxpayer. Um, so I just, I just wanted to make sure that's conveyed and understood by council. Cause I know sometimes we can get in our silos and not understand those things. Um, but it's, it's definitely, I think, uh, something that um, we should work to do. And I, I'm sorry if I'm late to the punch or don't understand the proper channels to announce this, but I, I just wanted to be known. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you, David.
There are no further raised hands.
Okay, so. I don't, got nothing else on the agenda? It's eight thirty-one. Basketball game starts in a little bit. Shall we adjourn?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Bye.
Still Thursday.